Okay. This is the May 5th, 2022, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. All members of the board are present. And we'll begin our meeting. We have an agenda of nine items, some of which will be pretty quick, but we'll begin our meeting as we always do with a public comment period, which is also how we end our meeting. So if there are any members of the public who want to comment on anything relating to planning, this is one of two times when you'll be able to do it.
Okay, first up I have Toby Arsenian. Toby, you're unmuted.
Thank you, Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Three things, Six Gold Cove. It's a public meeting and it's a public proceeding, your decision, and the public should be able to understand what you're doing. Could you please read through the nine standards that make it proper to grant the approval for a private way? And I would point out again that although I've not read them in years, I'm sure one of them is a proper turnaround, which does not exist and would not properly include the road across West Wharf, which was not part of the application. The second thing, we were discussing the stormwater last time, and Denise Donnelly, great minds think alike, stole my very words saying that, you know, whatever you come up with as a threshold, there are going to be cases where people do things that are willful and destructive to their neighbors' property that are just below the threshold. So while what Penny Pelzer is doing at the Government and Bylaw Committee may turn out to be an improvement, you need something parallel with it that would go into the zoning code that would say roughly that, you know, whatever you choose to do on your property in terms of filling or cutting or dredging or channeling, whatever, that you have no right to to channel water onto a neighbor's property. So two sorts of regulations, roughly what you had in the site plan review before you cast that particular provision out of it, over my objections. And the final thing is, one of the things you're bringing to the town meeting is the coastal floodplain zoning, and I'm asking you please to withdraw it and reconsider, try rewriting it from scratch and bring it to the fall town meeting. Could I have an answer on that one?
Well, I'll take it from the top, Toby. Gold Cove Lane is, it's not, it's on the agenda, but it isn't really because basically I had, and this, I was going to talk about this anyway, so might as well talk about it now. They did go out there, some, you know, some of the planning board members did go out, and the maps that were presented, which actually showed and approved surface with lots of detail, really wasn't helpful in terms of our determination as to whether this is a way that could be traveled, you know, by vehicular traffic. So I, I talked with Bob Visnick and I said, I know your surveyor has done a regular old survey map, not one which shows improvements, but actually shows where things begin and where things end and where the right of way is and where the property lines are, that kind of thing, where the trees are, and that, you know, we need that map. We don't need the map that shows a finished product. That, that isn't really, that's not what we're looking at, that this, and by the way, the standards, Toby, they're online. If you go to the planning board, I'm not going to spend a lot, spend time reading them here. You go to the planning board website, they are posted. Anybody can read them. Make sure that Mary, that that was done because they were from 2007 and they were in a filing cabinet and, and they needed to be, you know, available to the public and also applicants. So they're online. But anyway, long story short, there's not going to be any consideration of Six Gold Cove Lane tonight. Because we don't have the documentation that we requested for Six Gold Cove Lane as of now, and therefore I talked with Bob Visnick and I said, and he said, we won't be on, and I said, that's fine. You know, you don't have to be here because we're not going to get into it because we don't have the material that allows us to get into it. That's Gold Cove Lane. In terms of stormwater management, you're, you're a little ahead of us. I did speak with Penny Pelzer today and she's going to actually, one of the things we talked about is for her to be on our agenda for the next planning board meeting, which would be, I think, the next May, and to talk with us about what they're doing and why our involvement's important. She needs to do that. So we're not, you know, we really don't have anything to say about that at this point. Obviously, the bylaw, stormwater management bylaw, which is 8D, laws is, is in desperate need of revision, and that's, I think, what they're trying to do. There are no rules and regulations drafted by the planning board which are contemplated by 8D. They, they don't exist. We definitely need some work, but right now we're focused on, you know, what we have coming up on the 16th, which is, you know, getting through town meeting, and that's, that's really important. Was there something else?
Yes, would you withdraw it and save it for the fall?
Withdraw what?
The fall town meeting, the coastal floodplain zoning.
Well, we, there were no changes to that. That's the, it doesn't change. For one paragraph, and that was more grammatical than anything. Other than that, we haven't changed anything.
That's not what I recall. You were going to eliminate the Board of Appeals' control over portions of it. You were also going to eliminate the requirement for the building inspector to report buildings in the flood zone to the state, and Tom Mekus had come up with a different threshold to measure from, namely the Coastal Bank as opposed to mean high water. So there were indeed changes unless you've dropped them. Have you dropped them?
No, I know the changes, whatever change is there, is there, is there. It's, it's minor. The zoning Board of Appeals still has jurisdiction, but the section makes it clear now that that jurisdiction requires them to apply the federal standard for allowing construction, which it wasn't before. But that hasn't changed. It was just, it was just, it was just, the words were just changed around to make it more clear. So there's really nothing to withdraw. I don't, there haven't been any changes that would require anything being withdrawn. Does that mean that later that something can't be done? And I, I appreciate your offer to be involved with that. And, you know, that, that could be the next thing that we, we tackle after we get through May 16. Yeah. I think that answers everything you've asked. So.
Not satisfactorily, but that's an answer.
What isn't satisfactory? I think I, I think I did answer everything. What isn't satisfactory?
Your contention that there aren't any changes to the coastal floodplain zoning, whereas in fact there are.
I just mentioned the one that was the most significant, that is just tucking around, you know, breaking one long sentence into two sentences. And if you're talking about this other language that Tom Mekus had recommended, if that's a change, then it's in there. But other than that, that's it.
I object to that one, and I object to your proceeding with the thing piecemeal. I think it needs to be rewritten from the, from scratch.
It may need to be rewritten. I'm not saying I disagree with you, but yeah, okay. All right.
We'll give up.
Don't give up.
For now.
For now, yeah. But we're, things are still, you know, things are still in progress. So, okay. Let's, anybody else have comments?
I don't see anyone else with their hand up, Mr. Chair.
All right. So let's go to the minutes. We've got quite a few minutes. Kelsey, you've been busy. February 3rd, February 17, and March, you know, what is it, March 3rd? So we've got three sets of minutes. They're very comprehensive, I think. You know, I, does anybody, you want to take them one at a time and just go through them, you know, not go through them, but just to see if there are any additions, deletions, or changes, starting with February 3?
I've got a couple of them. I'll start. On page two, the paragraph includes of extending the TOVOD.
I can't hear you, Harry. Page two.
A little more than halfway through that paragraph.
Which paragraph? I'm sorry.
The first one on page two.
First full paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kushel states that in terms of sound buffering around the train station area and new district, I believe new district should be replaced with proposed overlay.
Wait a second. Kushel states that this concern is valid due to sewer capacity? Is that what you're talking about?
No.
Well, this is page two, first full paragraph.
Starting with, that paragraph starts with, in terms of extending the TOVOD, right?
You got the wrong minutes. Looking at a different set of minutes, maybe.
I'm looking at March 3rd.
Yeah, second page.
February 3rd.
February 3rd.
Yeah, what does the paragraph begin with?
In terms of extending the TOVOD.
Oh, boy, I don't see that.
Starts with Shaw states that.
Yeah, there are two paragraphs where it says Shaw states and one that says.
All right, all right. So mine, mine, mine paginated. Go down to the next page.
Page three.
In terms of extending the TOVOD.
Three. Right. So now, now I'm, and now we're on the same paragraph. What were you referring to?
About halfway into that paragraph, the sentence starts with Kushel states that in terms of sound buffering around the train station area and new district, I think new district should be replaced with proposed overlay.
Okay.
And the very last sentence in that paragraph, district is currently under the 25 and 50 acre requirements, I would say. The district is currently less than 25 and 50 acre requirements per state legislation.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? Anybody else on the February 3rd minutes? No?
Not me.
All right. So why don't we just vote on these right now? Motion to approve the, someone want to make a motion to approve the February 3rd minutes with the changes proposed by Harry Corson?
So moved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second. Roll call vote. You moved, seconded, Peter. You want to vote in favor?
Who are you talking to?
I'm talking to Harry. Can he?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi.
Yeah, Denise.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
I'll vote in favor. That's 5-0 with changes. All right, let's go on to the next set of minutes, which are the February 17 minutes. Any proposed additions, deletions, or changes to those?
I have one small thing.
Okay.
On page three, under number five, the second paragraph, the motion. The second line says, energy solution being presented, it's energy resolution.
Wait, oh. That's zero energy resolution. Okay.
That's it.
Anybody have any other comments?
Two. On the first page, section three, the second paragraph, Shaw states, at the end of that line, that is permitted, I believe should be changed to that is required.
Wait a second, Shaw said. Okay, that is required. Okay.
That's it.
Anybody else?
Nope.
All right, motion to accept the February 17, 2022 minutes with the changes proposed by Harry and Tom.
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Tom. Roll call vote. Harry.
Hi.
Denise.
Hi.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
I'll vote also to approve. That's 5-0 with changes. All right, we've got one more set of minutes, which is March 3, 2022. Any proposed, any proposed deletions, deletions, additions, or changes?
I have one small thing. Page two. Actually, number five follows number three. That's kind of weird, but that wasn't what I was.
Yeah, what happened to number four?
Does that matter?
Yeah. Well, that's like something was deleted.
That should be four, okay.
Okay, under number four then, the first paragraph, just second line from the bottom. It says the housing trust. The board should look into the housing trust. I was talking about Gloucesters Housing Trust, so you can change the to.
Gloucesters Housing Trust?
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, it sounds like our, somebody else's.
Okay, any other changes?
Nope.
All right, so motion to approve the Mount March 3, 2022 minutes with the change proposed by Tom. So moved. Moved by Peter, seconded by Harry. Roll call vote. Denise.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
I'll vote in favor. Minutes approved with the change. Okay, that. With the minutes.
We have the choreography, like the selectmen do. They know who's going to make the motion so we don't all make it and all second it.
Well, somebody has to do that. Somebody has to write it out.
But we don't have one of those somebodies.
Right.
Never mind.
We do, okay. Okay, approval of minutes. All right, now, next thing will be the Six Stone Haven Lane Site Plan Review. There's a continuation. There were some changes made by the applicant based on our comments at the last meeting. Is anyone here on behalf of the applicant? I see Treehouse Design.
I see Ian on too. The owner.
Treehouse Design was unmuted.
And Ian.
Okay, and Ian.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ryan MacArthur. I'm an architect in Treehouse Design. I'm here with Tim Thurman, the owner of Treehouse Design. We're here to represent Ian and Leah Whitehead in Six Stone Haven Lane.
Okay, yeah. So after our meeting last time, you were given some direction as to changes the planning board wanted to see.
Yes, we did.
Have those been made?
We have made those updates.
Why don't you tell us what they, what they are?
Excellent. When we met approximately a month ago on April 6th and met with the board, the broad strokes of requests that we make were made, we heard were general updates to the lighting plan to include dark sky compliant lighting, a clear labeling of those lights on the site plan. So we have done that and submitted that. It was requested that we develop a drainage plan with a civil engineer. We've met on site with that civil engineer, explored different options, and developed a drainage plan that is designed and sized for this specific home. We were also asked to be sure we were showing all existing conditions and clearly able to communicate existing contours and proposed contours. So it was understood where we were changing any grades. Those were generally the three high points of the evening, and those have all been included in our revised submission, and we're happy to talk about them tonight.
Okay, this was the submission of April. It's, it's date stamped here, April 29, 2022. Is that the submission we're, we're referring to? Just make sure we're on the same page?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I've looked at it. Anybody else have any comments?
Mr. Chair, I have reviewed the lighting updates and very nicely explained and appear fully compliant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good because lighting is very important. Any other?
Yeah, I'll, I'll offer some observations. I, I was on the site a week ago, maybe 10 days ago, I noticed some excavation going on, probably in the area where they were, where the proposed drywells are to be located. Just curious if there were any findings on those, and we have adequate capacity to absorb stormwater in those.
Yeah.
Drywells.
The, the civil engineer, John Judd Gateway Consulting, working with us on site, we had been showing in our previous submission a rain garden on the uphill side and two drywells on the low side. We explored with John test pits on the level area of the site around the home, and what we found were this was the soil in that location was compacted with stone and boulders and wasn't as suitable as we'd like it to be for drywells. And so the proposed solution with the civil engineer is to use a rain garden that would be sized to collect all of the roof water. It managed, it's sized to manage a 10-year storm, three inches of rain over 24 hours. And the rain garden essentially, it's, it's system is set up to retain the water during the storm event and then slowly let it percolate into the adjacent soil. So the location of the rain garden that's been proposed is behind the garage. That location was selected on site as a suitable location to create the rain, build up the rain garden with its berms, plant it with native species that do well in high, high water areas. And then the water percolates slowly back into the, the natural soil.
Interesting.
So the, I see you have, you have a detail of the rain garden and location on the second sheet of your submission.
Yes.
Right? Unless there's some other comments about things that were not done, that we request to be done. Sounds like the lighting has, has been laid out pretty well. And I guess the next thing will be to schedule this for a public hearing.
That would be wonderful. We would be very excited for that.
Okay, well, that would be based on the timing that we have for the notices to be mailed out and published. The public hearing would be at 6:30 on June 2nd of next month. And I've already drafted the the public notice for that, which you certainly welcome to use. That's what will be in the paper and what will be posted in the town hall. So we need a motion to schedule this site plan review application for a public hearing for 6:30 on June 2nd, 2022. Who's turn is it?
I'll move it.
Second. Denise moves, seconded by Peter. I'll vote. Harry.
Hi.
Denise.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor. So this matter is scheduled for a public hearing on June 2nd. There's no reason to appear at the intervening meeting, which will be, which will be on the 19th. All right, folks?
Could I ask one thing before we leave this topic? I just remembered on drawing A1.1 in the legend in the upper right, there are a couple of TBDs.
Wait a second, let me.
I don't know if they're necessary, but it says TBD for building separation and setback side rear.
I noticed that Treehouse Design is muted.
Drawing is just A1.1? Yes.
A1.1?
Yeah, there's a block that says zoning requirements.
I'm, I'm looking at A1.1.
It's in upper right, there's a block, requirements.
Oh, yeah, zoning requirements. City of Rockport, can change the town. Yeah.
Did you see the two TBDs under the proposed?
Wait a second. Building separation.
Yeah.
15 to 25 feet, to be determined, setback side yard, 10 feet, to be determined. I, I see them. Maybe there's some explanation about that.
I didn't even know if they were necessary. I just noticed they were TBDs.
Yeah, oh. Meaning what? I'm asking Treehouse.
Muted.
Oh. Can you unmute them?
Thank you. Sorry, we were muted during that time.
Yeah, no, you heard us though, correct?
We did hear you. So your questions were about the zoning table on the architectural site plan, and they were specifically about the accessory building section. The, that area has required existing and proposed, specifically building separation required 15 at 15 feet noted as TBD, and the setback side rear at 10 feet noted as TBD. Both of those are compliant dimensions. They frankly shouldn't be noted as TBD. The building separation is at 16 feet, so it is a foot larger than the required amount, and the side yard setback is notable, you know, a notable distance from any side property line at the closest, maybe 50 feet.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're way, I mean, it's way far away from the, the yard setbacks.
Yes, it is quite a distance from any property line.
Yeah.
I don't doubt that it's fine. I just think it'd be nice to update it with a, a number instead of a TBD.
I, I can do that. I appreciate that. I I can do that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's ten feet or more because of the size of the dwelling. But it doesn't matter. I mean, you're, it's academic because your setback is what is it? I don't.
Enormous.
Yeah, you certainly need it. You got, you got fifteen feet.
Yeah.
You got fifteen feet. Um you got a bunch of setbacks on the plan. Um, twenty-five, fifteen, twenty-five. So what are they, what are they setbacks from?
The setbacks uh are shown on the site surveys and what is required. So the increased setbacks are observed for the size of the home, uh increasing the front and side setbacks. Um, our distance of the building to the property lines uh are, you know, in no way uh offending any of the setback requirements or in that area. Uh, we uh met with Paul Orlando and confirmed that the building does not require any, does not require zoning relief.
Right.
I just checked really quickly uh the setback of the accessory building with the property line. It was fifty-six feet. Uh, if we need to add dimensions of the house to all the property lines, we can.
What you need to do is that is show your minimum, you know, what what's required and it's obvious that you far exceed that.
And they are, their distances are noted on the uh zoning table. So those dimensional distances of the front and the sides, we have on the architectural site plan and zoning table.
Okay, uh, that's good. You know, one, one thing, this has nothing to do with anything of substance, but I having a hard time with your audio. I don't know if anybody.
Too, yeah.
Yeah, and this happened last time too. Um, you're.
Is it a, is it a volume or is it an echo?
Well, it's like you break up and it's
Chopping.
Follow what you're saying.
Gargling.
Well, I apologize for that. We did, we did a test run of this beforehand and really wanted to make sure that any tech problems that could have come up, we ironed out. Um, the audio volume was fine at the time. Uh, sometimes.
Better now.
Yeah. Like five minutes ago.
It's a big improvement from last time too when you were
Well, thank you.
Far away on that table.
Yeah, might be, might be the distance you are from the microphone. I'm not sure. But it, you know, I'm an audio specialist, so, but it it was earlier, just earlier today, it was a problem hearing you, just so you know.
Okay, that's, that's helpful to hear just generally for uh for our IT system.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. Public hearing, June second. See you June second.
If we want to ask if they want updated plans.
Do you need any updated plans prior to that hearing? Or I know that the TBD TBD note was.
You know what, you can, you can I I don't care if it's before the hearing or just before you uh, you know, before they're made final after the hearing.
Yep.
I think, I would say, Jason, I think this convention of just dotting the setback all around the property is a much better convention than dimensioning setbacks on a building with this many bumps and turns.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I I don't.
Visually see it's not in the setback.
Yeah, I don't see the purpose of that, right?
No, so it's different on every corner.
Yeah. So you're thinking what they've done is good?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with you. Yeah. Okay.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Right, see you on the second.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, four, we're gonna skip over because we're not we're not doing anything on Gold Cove Lane on that request at this point. Uh, five, continued discussion of appropriate stormwater management permit threshold. As I mentioned um earlier, I did have a conversation with Penny Pilzer, uh who's on the government bylaw committee and is responsible for drafting the stormwater management, redrafting the bylaw and um you know, I told Penny, we have this, this chart that she gave us, which I think everyone has a copy of with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen different towns and what they do for stormwater management. And I told her, I think our problem is we don't know what's, what's right here. I mean, we, we, I think we all believe that twenty, that a twenty thousand square foot disturbance as being the threshold trigger is perhaps too, too high, but you know, technically speaking, do I, do I know what would be the right trigger for a stormwater management permit from the town? No. I don't know. Does anybody else know? Because I don't, told her, I don't know.
I I know Laura Kozicek has done a lot of research in this area um on the color code. She might be a person to work with Penny.
Well, maybe, but you know, I I know Penny has talked with her. Personally, I like NADIEX way of doing it, which is they have two left different levels. One is uh basically if you're over three thousand square feet of a disturbance, you need some minor level of stormwater management review. This could be done by, let's say, the building inspector. But you're all, if you're, if you're over twenty thousand square feet, twenty thousand or over, then you add, go to the full planning board, assuming we're gonna be the stormwater management permitting authority. Then you go to us for a full board review, which means, you know, consultants and that kind of thing. Um so that was, that was, that sounded appealing to me, but you know, anything else? Five thousand square feet, two hundred cubic yards, two thousand square feet. I mean, you know, who knows? I don't know.
The thing is, Jason, that, those metrics are not qualitative. So I think we really have, whatever we do, we need to think about what land is being disturbed. I don't think it's a question of how much, but the nature of the land. So you see that some of them um refer to wetlands. You know, there are so many um so many areas in town that are not easily defined, motions and so forth, that I I'm not, you know, I would prefer to see something that is more, that takes into account not just size, but the quality and the nature of the disturbance.
Yeah, I mean, we, that's certainly a factor. Um.
I mean, the challenge, the challenge of Rockport, Cape Ann for that matter, is that we sit on a rock, so nothing percolates into the ground very well. Manchester has a permit for earth removal.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that gets, that goes along with what I think Denise.
But I, part of this here is also to capture, in other words, when someone um, a a good example might be there is a house, and I'm not picking on them, but
Yeah.
This is a good example. There's a house on uh Mount Pleasant Street that it was a very steep lot. No one thought that they could build a house there.
I know the lot you mean.
Talking about tons and tons of excavation. They built the house into the side of a hill.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when it rains, that water ends up on Mount Pleasant Street.
Yep.
There, because there's no way to capture it. In other words, we created an impervious surface, the driveway, the house, and all the water that used to run into the ground there runs somewhere. I mean, and that's the whole point too of this. You know, um Penny's gonna be at our meeting. Um, I I don't really see the point of going over this now because unless someone's got a you know, an idea of what it should be, um she's gonna be at our meeting on the nineteenth, and I think we need to talk about this with her. But again, unless someone says, oh, I know what it should be because, what it should be, you know? I think it should be something less than what we have now, but how much less? And whether the same, I mean, I personally, if this planning board's gonna be doing this, I don't want to be involved in doing stormwater management review for a four thousand square foot disturbance as a body, as a board. I I I think that's a waste of our time and it's something that somebody else could do, like the building inspector or you know, I'm just throwing that out because we have no more conservation commission at this point.
Well, we will have one at some.
Yeah, we will. We will, I guess, yeah. So anyway, does anybody have anything more they want to talk about this before the nineteenth? Now, okay. Then we won't talk about it anymore. And then Denise won't be here.
We don't know that.
But I, I shouldn't say.
I think Denise would rather be here than somewhere else.
Right, she might want to be, yes.
But it's Harry's writing campaign she's worried about.
Yeah, exactly.
So um, six is the warrant articles. As you can see, they are now on the website. Um I you know, they are done the way they were done. We did, you know, this was the way they were divided up, mechanically divided up into four different warrant articles. You know, it's, it it might not have been the best way to do it, but that's the way they are. We don't have any involvement with that. I did write a letter to the residents, which is also on the website. I did modify that letter till I now, so it now refers to specific the specific articles of the warrant and refers to the page that they're on. So someone can actually go find them, which I I actually was having a problem finding the articles in, you know, the way they were posted. So, you know, I haven't heard other than one person who I don't give a lot of credence to, um I'm not gonna mention any names. I haven't heard any comments one way or another from anybody. Other than the fact that the Board of Selectmen at their meeting last week approved of every single warrant item. It was unanimous with the exception of one, uh Don Campbell abstained because he's got a property management company. He abstained from voting on the, the ADU uh warrant article, so that was four zero, but everything else was five zero. And that's, that's very gratifying to have the Board of Selectmen, you know, giving us that level of support. So we don't have the same level of support from the Zoning Board of Appeals. They, at their last meeting, they um they said they approved of all the changes with the exception of the ADU change. Um, so that's, you know, that's their opinion. Um, they want it completely rewritten, from what I understand. Um, you know, you take that for what it's worth. I think the, I think we spent probably more time on the ADU section than any of the other sections in terms of figuring out how to write that. And I think it's pretty good. So that's where we are.
Jason, do you want to mention the PowerPoint?
Yeah, that was gonna be my next thing.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm getting there. And so Denise has um has has taken the PowerPoint that EC did and is is kind of morphed it into a PowerPoint for the you know, for the town meeting. I'm looking at it right now. Um and it's um, it's gonna be pretty good. Um and it will, hopefully we'll have it posted on, on the website before the meeting, so people can actually go through the PowerPoint on their own and see what we're up to, you know? That's, that's about it. I mean, it's basically, it's taken the PowerPoint that the uh MAPC did and maybe cutting it down a little in certain areas, so it's not so we really want to keep it direct and to the point, so people can understand directly what's going on.
Right.
And that's uh, you know, I guess this will be our yeah, this will be our last meeting before the town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, we'll talk about you know, how we want to do this. I mean, I would think we want to sit together. Um, I know Denise won't be technically, won't be on the planning board anymore, but she can certainly talk as a, as a former member of the planning board about this stuff that, you know, we all worked on. And uh, anybody else who's interested in saying anything and why we did what we did, that would be terrific, you know? Think about it, folks.
Yeah. What was it? This, this week, uh, Caneely spoke in Essex.
Yeah.
On the TOVOD. I don't know if anybody from our committee was able to uh attend that or not, but it was summarized.
Yeah. We're, oh, Caneely is the executive director, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you hear that?
No, but but he was, he was um quoted in, I think, today's or yesterday.
Times, yeah.
Daily Times is basically saying, listen, we're, we're not forcing anybody to build this housing. We're just creating the zoning so that it could be built. And you seem to stress that and as we, as we have on many occasions.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the, the only, the only big issue for us and I guess a lot of other towns is the scope of what a family over, the multifamily district, how large it has to be to be compliant. And that's where I think there's a disagreement. We're still waiting on the, you know, they're gonna, it's gonna be a while before they come up with final guidelines. I mean, there's no point in having guidelines that no one can
Right.
What's the point?
Yep.
You're gonna cut, you know, ten towns out of the ability to uh get grants because they can't meet your, you know, fifty acres of multifamily housing?
But a counterpoint to the uh Daily Times, the Globe editorial today did come out in favor of it.
Favor of
the, the overlay drawings.
Yeah, okay, well.
I I would expect that from the Globe.
Jason, I had a conversation with several people from Gloucester about uh what they're doing and tried to compare.
Are we, are, but I just want to move on if we're gonna move on. Are we off? Warrant articles for May sixteen?
Isn't that what you were gonna talk about, Tom?
Uh, because we'll go to member items if we're, if we're.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna compare their um current experience with their changes in zoning with ours, but we could do that in a member, member items if you like.
No, go ahead. I mean, that's fine. I I didn't, I wasn't sure, you know. They're kind of morphing into each other anyway, so.
Yeah. So uh, two things that that we touched on here, um on the ADUs, um, when I told them that we had a minimum of six months of rental, they were so envious of us because apparently they've, they're trying to set theirs at thirty days. And that's gonna be a problem for having any sort of a long-term housing solution. And when I pointed out that the project doesn't need to be built, they said, well, that's probably not so easy to uh get away from there. They said the uh, the shaws near the rail station has been sold to a big developer. So their expectation is it will be developed. So they're in a very different situation and we should consider ourselves lucky in terms of where we are and how we're handling it both.
Yeah, I I think they're, they're, they've had a lot of opposition. A lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, see, I I frankly, I've not heard anything from anybody about what's up on May sixteen, which can either be good or bad, you know, or not, or neither.
I, I, I wonder how many people are gonna show up?
Yeah. Well, that would be interesting. Yeah. Okay, well, let's move to member items. If anybody has, I have one thing. I just, I got a letter, but that just came in actually yesterday from the Department of Housing and Community Development. It's actually, I'm not sure if this was addressed to us, but it's, it's just generically to a local official. And it's from a, you know, number chief counsel at the Department of Housing and Community Development. It's dated April 25, and the subject is subsidized housing inventory biennial update. I can't read the whole letter because it's a long letter. But this is kind of falls into what we're talking about with our housing production plan and everything. The Department of Housing and Community Development is in the process of updating the Chapter 40B subsidized housing inventory, which they refer to as SHI. The methodology for county units on the SHI is subject to DHCD regulations. And they cite to some regulations. The SHI is used to measure the community's attainment of affordable housing goals for the purpose of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, the Comprehensive Permit Law. A developer may appeal to the State Housing Appeals Committee for Review of Local Actions on a comprehensive permit if the municipality's SHI-eligible housing does not exceed 10% of its year-round housing stock based on the latest available U.S. Census. So and then it says, which I don't have a copy of. This must have gone to Mitch or something. Enclosed for your review and use is DHC's current SHI record for your community, which generally reflects information we have processed as of April 15 regarding the number of all units that qualify for inclusion on the SHI. So where's, the inventory is not with this, which makes me believe that we weren't, that the planning board is not the primary recipient of this memorandum that it went to, you know, the town administrator. I would love to see that. Because as we all know, we're, we're below 10%.
We're below 5%.
Yeah, which means we're in jeopardy of, you know, having something come in here that we may not want, like so many of the other communities. So and it, doesn't that tie into the you know, housing inventory and production plan? Isn't that all related to this?
Yes.
Yeah, so if, if we had a housing production plan that was current and that had laid out an action plan as to how we were going to achieve 10%, I think that buys us some relief.
Yeah.
From a 40B effort.
Yeah. Well, um, this is concerning, but.
So as, as we look forward and assuming that Denise will no longer be part of the planning board going forward, who's going to inherit the responsibility for the housing production plan far and far?
Let's see a hand.
Denise was muted. What did you say Denise that got you muted? Oh, there you are.
No, I muted myself because of the background noise. Um, Harry, you are.
Okay.
I don't, I'm just saying that. I don't know.
I might, I, 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 I might stir things up.
Harry, you can be the subsidized housing inventory team.
I, I tell you. I'm gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna get a hold of this current SHI record for Rockport. And we'll see where we are. But this is really, it's really imperative that we go forward with this.
We've been trying.
Believe me, I know. All right, we've done everything we possibly can to get this done.
Yep.
And maybe now that you're in on the Board of Selectmen, maybe.
Not, not yet, don't be.
Yeah, okay, let's assume. It happened, maybe something could be done from that end. Anyway, just, anybody wants to look at this letter? It's here.
Jason, if you could scan it and send it out.
I, I I will have, I will have Mary do that. And it says, actually, you can request a copy of the SHI listing for your city town by emailing, and they have an email for that. So we're gonna definitely get it one way or another. Okay, that's, that's all I have for member items. Anybody else have anything?
I have three things. Time permitting?
Yeah, go ahead. We got, we got time.
So there was a workshop of the, I forget the precise title, the Cape Ann Climate Resilience Study that was sponsored by Town Green with the EPA grant. I don't know if any of you were at that, but it was quite an interesting presentation where they showed what they called the Storm of 2038, which is modeled after the Storm of 1938 and projected into our current situation. And they showed some localized maps, like here's what's gonna happen on Bearskin Neck. And here's what's gonna happen in Long Beach.
They did actually more than maps. They did some computer models. Were pretty dramatic.
Oh, yeah, you were there.
Yeah. It showed the big, they showed how height of waves and, and distance back from the shore that they would hit.
Yeah.
How far?
Well, they were wrecking some model houses actually quite a bit.
Wrecking what?
They were showing them, showing houses getting hit.
Yeah, I bet.
So interestingly, not everything on Bearskin Neck was ruined. There were some little islands that survived somehow. I don't know if that's an error in topography or that there's just bumps that I don't know about. But there will be another workshop coming up. And you might be interested in attending that. And there's also a webinar coming up with, I think, some of the modeling work on the storm itself. So if there's interest there, I can, I can send out the dates for those. Okay, item number two, the North Shore Task Force met. Uh, there's a new chair who is a member of the Ipswich Planning Board. And Chris Kuschel gave a presentation there. Uh, which was kind of erroneously titled, I think, as strip malls. And it really was broader than that. It was what you can do to redevelop current commercial properties for mixed use. And I, I said around the results that they had, there were eight sites identified in Rockport. And I haven't done anything with that. I don't know if any of those have any possibilities, but just interesting that it went to that level of detail where they found eight specific places in Rockport that you might want to consider for a mixed-use development. So maybe a future agenda item if we decide to look into that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And finally, Penny Pilsner contacted me about the lighting section of the general Bible. And I don't know if anybody else wants to have any input into that, or I should just give her my two cents? How would you like to work that? Our former contact.
She's gonna be talking with us on the 19th, so you want to put a placeholder for that?
Uh, yeah, it was gonna be about stormwater, but we could also make it.
No, it can be about anything, anything relating to what she's doing that affects us.
Okay. Back when we did this, originally it was Hank Betts, who's no longer with us on the board at least.
He's still with us.
He's still with us, as far as I know.
But not forgotten. Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jason, as, as we've been talking here, I went back and I, I dug up a, a charge which came from DHCD. And it's about building permits from 2015 through 2019. And the reference here sources U.S. Census Building Permit Survey and SHI or subsidized housing inventory. So just, just as a point of reference, for the town of Rockport, 2015 through 2019, there were a total of 57 permits issued. Um, I'm assuming those permits are for things other than, you know, additions and roof replacements and things of that nature. Basically representing newer replacement housing units. And it's, it's pretty, pretty even distribution through the years. Um, with the exception of 2019, the last year of this database, when a total of 18 units were permitted. So, um, at that point in time, our year-round housing units, again, I guess this data was sourced from the SHI, were 3,460 units. And the increase from 2015 to 2019 was 1.65%. There's been no movement really in the number of housing units within town.
Yeah.
Well, that'll, that'll change with the Granite Street Harbor Light Development.
How many, how many were turned there?
Um, I don't remember, maybe.
29?
Twenty, something, yeah.
So that'll move us and it's, it's interesting because if we did have a housing production plan, there might be some references in there about the permitting of that project and how it would move our affordable housing inventory from its current level of something sub 4% to maybe about 4%. So that gets to your point, Denise, of perhaps buying the town some time as it relates to a potential 40B project.
Right.
But if we don't have the HPP, shame on us. Shame on the town of Rockport.
Yeah. Any other member items?
Are we gonna see your PowerPoint show at some point in time ahead of time, or would that help?
We'll send it to you, yeah. I mean.
Be nice to know ahead of time.
A meeting and it's pretty, it's very similar to what was by, by Chris Kuschel. Just taken, cutting it down a little.
Yeah.
Believe me, there'll be people who, the town meeting, who probably have not seen anything. And there are people who, a few comments I've gotten from persons whose names I won't divulge. It's like, it's like they, it doesn't matter what we did, it's what they think. We did. That matters. What we did? No, that doesn't matter. It's kind of astounding. So, um, okay, public comment. Any other public comment? Second time?
I do have Toby with his hand up. Toby, are you muted?
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Uh, I believe I heard 160 pages for the zoning articles. And did you say four votes?
Wait a second, I, I don't.
Did you say that you planned four votes? The three projects, the ADUs, the train station, the open space, and all the rest of it? Is that your intended format?
No, that is the format. That is the intended, that is the format.
Well, I, I would.
Sorry, B, C, D, and E. There are three separate warrant articles.
Yes, and are you planning to identify, you know, section by section, the Roman numeral sections as you go through them?
And the PowerPoint, Toby?
PowerPoint, there is some, not everyone, but there are some general identifications, yes.
I mean, as, as we go through them at the town meeting, I would say anything less than that would be an attempt to railroad the thing through. I also.
Hold on for a second. PowerPoint has them listed. They are listed the you know, in the very, the various sections are, for example, the three separate ones, the ADUs, open space residential development, and the TOVOD are essentially new sections, entirely new. It's only the first one that has changes in various different sections that I think what, what you're referring to.
Yes. And are you going to go through those section by section, the Roman numeral sections or not?
You mean like every time a definition was moved from one section and put in another section? Or every time a definition was eliminated because it was archaic? Are we gonna go through every one of those things?
No, I said the Roman numeral sections that it's divided into.
To a point, yes.
Um.
It's all there, Toby. It's all there.
It's all there, and you've got a grasp of it. And, and your fellow citizens, as you've acknowledged, are most unlikely to have a grasp of it.
And that's not what I said. I said that the one person that I've heard from didn't have a, not only didn't have a grasp, didn't care about having a grasp. So that's different.
Yes, it, it certainly is. Um, I would hope that as you go through it with all of the changes, that they're identified both by section number and subsections and also by page numbers so that people have a chance of following along. I would say if you're not doing that, the whole thing is not in good faith. And as I said before, I object to the coastal flood, flood plain section. And you declined to withdraw it, which would be the proper thing to do. And I want to know if you intend to produce the maps at the town meeting.
Toby, nothing has changed in that section except reordering a sentence. It is identical to what it is now. It's just that the sentence order has changed.
I don't believe that's the case. Tom Meekus made changes to this.
Those, you must have missed the meeting where we decided not to move forward with those.
Good, good. I, I still feel that the whole thing should be put off in its entirety.
I'm, I'm looking at that section, Toby, just for your edification. There are there's one phrase district delineations where it refers to maps, and then it says that what was added was, or whatever is most current. That language was added. And then the only other language that was added to that entire section, actually not added, it was the same language, which is at the last paragraph, it says, "The Board of Appeals may grant a special permit for new construction or substantial improvements, provided that the proposed structure shall be erected on a lot of one-half acre or less and surrounded on all sides by lots improved with pre-existing structures that are below the base flood elevation. The DBA shall apply the variant standards set forth in 44 CFR 60.6 when determining such a special permit." That's exactly what it said before. It says exactly the same thing, just a little clearer. Those are the only changes in the entire section. So there's nothing to withdraw.
The point, the point of withdrawing it is to start again from scratch, which is what is.
That's a different consideration that we're, you know, which we're definitely taking your suggestion seriously. But we can only do so much at one time.
And, and do you intend to have the maps and produce them on the screen at the town meeting?
Hey, we're not, we're not doing anything. We're not, we're not doing anything. That would just confuse people even more. We're, we're not changing anything. Okay, sorry.
No, not okay.
We're not gonna produce maps that we haven't changed.
Uh, no maps were produced at the public hearing and none were available before it. I'll just remark on that.
Okay, fine. All right, any other public comments?
No.
Anybody else?
I don't see anyone else with their hand up, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Denise, this will be our last meeting. It's been a real pleasure having you.
Likewise.
Wish you well. I hope being on the Board of Selectmen for a little while will make you want to come back to the planning.
Yeah, I may be back sooner than you think, huh?
Tremendous having you. You've been a real asset. Thank you.
Very much. I've enjoyed working with all of you.
To know you.
I echo Jason's sentiments.
You can't get rid of us later easily.
So. Okay, do we have a second? On the motion to adjourn? Second? Okay, Tom, vote call vote, Peter.
Hi.
Denise.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
All vote in favor, meeting adjourned at.
Seven forty-three.
And have a good night, everybody, and we'll see you at town meeting.
Bye.
Good night.
Happy.
Good night, everyone.